Okay, we're ready.
So the meeting, the order, and we'll start with a word of prayer. Dear Father in heaven, we thank you for this opportunity we have together as a board and as a town. And we thank you for the patrons that have attended. And we just thank you for this evening and just watching over us and bringing us here all safely. And just give us the wisdom and knowledge to conduct the business that the town needs handled. And give us the knowledge to make the decisions. And Lord, we just pray that you guide us and direct us in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. All right. We, our last meeting was October the 13th. And I need a motion for the, if you read over the minutes and approval of the minutes from last month's meeting.
I make a motion to approve. My second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passed. Okay.
Aye. Just kidding.
That was what I'm gonna say. You're like the person at the wedding, anybody, never mind. All right, now you're up since you got your voice on.
I just, I looked into another accounting software. G S I, G S, G A S I, I think is what it's called. But it's out of Ohio. And they do utility billing too. And I believe it was the lady from the clerk from the town of Upland. And she said their cost was about forty-five hundred dollars a year. And that included billing. Well, if I remember right, I should look this up. I think we're paying employees about three thousand dollars for the utility billing. So if this went everything with them, might come out ahead.
Okay.
That'd be a big change for me. And they, and I think they, I think they work with Semesters to Todd on the meters. I think they work with them too. So I wouldn't mind looking a little further into them. It looked like when I looked at what all they had as far as the accounting in, it looked like their deal to me. I mean, they had what we need. We don't need anything elaborate. But she was pretty happy with it. She said she gave up voice and went with them. She was pretty happy with them.
So I-
And I haven't been impressed with the boys lately. I just feel like they're, well, I asked three times for a quote on their software and I still don't think. So I don't know if they-
That's not good.
I don't know if they think we're too little to mess with anymore or-
Well, then we'll do this way. We'll give you some more chance to dig into it. We'll come back to it next month. All right. Now, next up on the item is, uh, we're gonna go to Todd. And I think you had an issue with the well.
Yeah, I, I put the contract in front of you guys. I went ahead and signed the contract and sent it back to them just so I can try to get this done as soon as possible. We're down to just one well out of the three right now. Well, number one's getting a lot of air in it somewhere. There's no air release valve on air well number one. There never has been. I don't know how long that well's been there. I'm gonna guess thirty or forty years. So I don't know why we're getting the issue of air getting into it now. But when the air gets in the line, I've got like a venturi pump that pulls chlorine into the system. That gets air locked, can't get chlorine in the water. So without chlorine in the water, we can't distribute it. So there, uh, that, that was just what was going on with it. They're gonna come and put an air valve, air release valve in them. And hopefully that takes care of the issue. So I, I just wanted to give you guys a heads up on what was going on with that.
Okay.
And I'm hoping, I'm hoping I'll get that fixes the issue.
How long's that been going on, Todd?
Uh, that well's been down for about a month and a half now. We've just been working with people coming in and looking at it, trying to troubleshoot it. First chlorine guy come and, uh, he said it was on the well side. The well guy, we did a flow test and a sand test and everything. Everything looked good on it. Just getting that air at startup.
What's going on?
Yep.
Matt, do we need to make a motion on this about the well or pass it or what?
Sorry, I haven't come here. I heard there's only one of them working. What's the-
Hey, Matt, this is Todd. Uh, I was just letting them know, I, I've got a quotation of contract for our well number one. We're getting air in it. It's, uh, it's not working. So, uh, I just gave them a contract to get the air release valve installed in that well number one. And they was wondering if they need to make an emotion to approve this.
Yeah, go ahead and approve that with a motion.
Okay. On the well number one and the proper fixing of it to, uh, to take the air out of the lines that the well's having, I need a motion to accept this contract.
I make a motion to accept it. My second.
Motion made and seconded. All wills opposed. Okay, motion passed. So go ahead and take care of that if you haven't already. Next up, um, Josh, can you kind of give us a little info on the siren?
Yes, what you guys have in front of you is the quote from, uh, ECS out of Bloomington. I spoke with Mike Dyer. We've been trying to get this tornado siren working correctly for several, several months. We've got everything working. The issue we're having is that's a four hundred watt system. And it's got four one hundred watt amps inside that siren, the siren box. And that gives it the proper levels of loudness, you know, what you, you need to hear. So one of those amps was damaged. So when we got everything on board and got the siren working and we tested it, we found out that one of the amps was damaged. So we're still working. It's still working and still loud and it's still alerting and still set up, you know, for our alerts. It's just not proper loudness. So that people that are outside may not hear on the very outside of town, which ultimately that's what that siren is for. Cause we're only, we're running on three hundred watts. So with that one one hundred watt amp being damaged, um, I sent it off already to have them look at it. They've got back to us and that quote's in front of me. I think it's, uh, what was it, eight thirty-five for repairs? And then six thirty-five for the service and everything else. Um, it's like fifteen hundred and ten dollars. So with your guys' approval, we can go ahead and get them started on the service and repair that. So we can get it here and get that installed before springtime and we have to worry about tornado season again. Um, I've also reached out, um, for a grant to try to procure some funds for this as well, you know? So we're kind of, that's gonna be about mid-December, end of December before that comes in. Um, I turned everything in this Friday.
We don't have to wait for the grant to fix it though, do we? Like, you know, if we get the-
I don't believe so. No. If you guys, if we could just go ahead and go, and that's one thing. Mike, I may contact him tomorrow and say, hey, can we just hold off till the end of December? Since obviously there's not gonna be tornadoes between now and, I mean, you never know. But we still got three hundred watts. You know, we still have three hundred watts and we do have an emergency alert system. It's just not as loud.
I'd say get it fixed. I mean, we've been working on this thing for-
Whatever you guys are go, then I can reach back out to the grant and say, hey, we're willing to go ahead and front the money. Would you guys be okay with just going ahead with the grant? And then we can just reverse you guys back.
As long as there's no issue with that. Which I would, who would be, but who knows? I think that he has done this as economically as possible the entire time. Like really, it needs to be fixed.
So I guess the best way to word it is, is the fifteen hundred and ten dollars, go ahead and take that out of the general fund, get it fixed and then when it, if you get the grant, you can reimburse the general fund.
Yeah, I think that'd be a smart move. Cause you never know what's gonna happen the next couple of months.
Well, it is gonna be seventy on Saturday. So the, when you're like that, you never know.
We have had tornadoes in December.
That's true, ma.
I have.
We have, I know.
Knock on wood, hopefully this is the last thing that that thing needs. And we're good for hopefully many years to come.
How many miles are they supposed to be able to hear it outside of town?
Uh, really? Not real sure. I guess.
I've been somewhere and heard that siren. And I was, I was pretty impressed that I could hear it that far away.
I know. So we've partnered with, did Driftwood Township, cause that was how we saved a lot of money between Jackson County nine oh one and ourselves by partnering with them. So we're running off their frequency. That way we didn't have to get our own frequency. And it just, just made it an easy transition. So since we're only like so many, we're just a stone's throw to Bologna. That's why we decided to just piggyback off their tone and frequency. Because there's, it's something about bottom land between Bologna and here. So if Bologna's siren goes off, ours is simultaneously gonna go off. So the two of them together should reach all that bottom land, you know, in between us and Bologna. And Clint Wolka lives basically halfway, you know where he lives at? Just out there on two thirty-five? Built that new red barn house? He says he can hear Bologna at his house and he can hear our siren at his house. So it's working out perfect.
Which, if you could go back and talk a little bit, I don't know if everybody understood. We were on Seymour's originally.
Yes. So we were having to contact Seymour, watch the weather, contact Seymour. They'd have to set our siren off for us. Well, when they set ours off, everything in Seymour went off. And that's not good when you're thirty, you know, thirty minutes away.
Or vice versa.
And then it got to the point where they said, no, we're, you guys gotta get this set up on your own. We're not gonna do this no more. So this past tornado serum season, we literally had to come in here and just put this, one guy just had to be the sacrifice and flip the switch.
That gives us a good history and background. But I'd, uh, like to propose that we, uh, consider funding this. I just know need a motion.
And this isn't just a tornado siren. I don't know if you guys are aware of that. This is actual, it's emergency alert siren. So it can do air raid, any emergency alert tones, anything. Does multiple things to just tornadoes.
Does the sound's different?
Yep.
So if we have a railroad car that's got a hazardous chemical in it?
Yeah, it would set up on, we don't know what those tones are. It'd be audibly different. It'd be a different.
Does it deflect?
No.
Okay, no. Well, I make a motion to approve. My second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Proceed. Matt, I'm gonna put you in the middle of this. No, do what you gotta do, Brad. I'm good. Yeah, I'm good. I don't know if you had to get back to, you know, Scott County.
I'll pull up going back.
Leslie, I'm gonna ask you to speak a little bit about the food pantry.
Okay, perfect. So, um, I got with Joe Barnes and he sent me a really great list of food assistance in Jackson County. I'm going to print it off and make it available here at the town hall for anybody that needs to see it. And I'm also gonna post it on the website. Um, and I did see today that, um, Joe's also keeping that little food pantry down there at the fire station stall. So if anybody needs additional food assistance, we certainly have the information. And he did mention a new, um, food pantry that is open twenty-four hours, I believe he said, in Freetown as well. But there's a wealth of information on this sheet if anybody needs assistance. And, um, if anybody can offer assistance, I'm sure the food pantry down there, the little food pantry at the fire station, they'd be happy to have that replenished, you know, on a weekly basis too, if anybody's able to offer any assistance.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, we have, uh, also something added to the, you know, the Rumpkey contract. I got this before me and Todd, you may have to help me with this. But, um, it's got a base price of a hundred and seventy-five thirty-eight per month. And then it's got a, um, FL lock service. I'm not sure what that's for, but it's for nine ninety-three base rate a month. But, um, so at the water tower, we have a dumpster.
Yep, we got a dumpster at the water tower. They come weekly to, uh, dump it. The one seventy-five, I think that's for the, the portage on at the water tower.
Oh, okay.
It's been there, it, it's been there for about a year and a half now.
Well, they're gonna go up on it then.
Right. And, uh, sometimes in the future, we may look into probably just maybe building a, you know, restroom over there. Instead of paying that hundred and seventy-five a month for a, you know, a porta potty.
Yeah, you probably could've done built.
And she's got one building.
What's that?
She must go behind the door.
I assume if we sign this contract, this lock can extend another year though.
So the, the nine hundred, that's probably for the dumpster over there? Does that sound right for a dumpster?
Nine thirty-three, about nine dollars and thirty-five.
Okay.
For the dumpster? No, we're paying two fifteen something for trash removal for the dumpster. And a hundred and seventy-one something for the porta potty.
I'd say it's gotta be more than that.
I don't know what this is.
What is it? Is it, this has FC? If it's FC, it's a fuel surcharge.
If they have lock service is what it says.
Yeah, I don't know what that.
Can you say that lock?
No.
What is it?
If they have lock service, I don't know what the-
Yeah, I'd say this is just the agreement for the, for the portage on.
One seventy-five thirty-eight base rate.
And they come once, uh, once every two weeks, I think, to clean it?
Yeah, maybe they have to call and then find out what this is for. Before we sign any agreements?
Is that a contract for the fall, this coming year? Or you say it's gonna raise, it's gonna go up some?
Sounds like it's went up.
I know when we quoted it the first time, it was a hundred and seventy-five.
Well, it's been running like a hundred and seventy-one, a hundred and seventy, something like that. It, it fluctuates with the fuels.
I don't understand what that lock, that lock service is.
Yeah, I was just gonna have to table this and call them, I think, before we-
We'll, we'll find out. But I, you know, one thing we ought to consider though is eventually looking in the building, maybe a facility over there. If we're at a hundred and seventy-five a month for the next ten years, we got a lot of money in them.
Right.
That's crazy.
Little plastic outflow.
Yeah, that's crazy.
Let's, uh, put this on hold and we'll work into it before we jump into that, so to speak. Okay, next up on the total bowl is the website update. Anything that you need to bring us up today? We've progressed or regressed or?
I have a, um, Zoom scheduled with Christie this Thursday. And she is going to teach me how to do all the things that have to be done monthly. So uploading the meeting from YouTube to the, uh, website, um, uploading the, um, agenda and then the minutes. So just the regular stuff that has to be done every month. I'm gonna do it. And so she's gonna show me how to do all that stuff. And we're gonna do that on Thursday. And I'm gonna kind of get a plan in place, like every Monday that we have the meeting or the Tuesday after, I would then do those things. Um, I have got the calendar straightened out and some things added on the calendar. So if we ever have calendar events that need to be, you know, community events, I can now easily add them to that calendar online.
Like hydro, hydro flushes or anything like that?
Yeah, anything, anything. Just let me know about it. And it's real easy for me to just go into the Google account and add it to the Google calendar. And automatically, uh, she has it set up, so it just syncs with the website. And then I thought what I'd do in January, cause I haven't really like introduced it to the public like fully. I've sent out the YouTube things and all that. But I thought maybe in January, after I got some of these regular things going, um, I would kind of put the, the website out there a little bit more, like for the general public, so people could start accessing it a little more freely. Cause right now I think a few people know about it, but they mostly get on YouTube to watch the meetings and not the website, which either way is fine, but.
Appreciate you keeping up on that. Take care of that. Are you seeing a lot of viewers? I mean, are a lot of hits, people watching it?
Uh, we have like probably sixty-some people that are, have liked our YouTube channel. Um, I can't tell how many people watch it after we're live. But typically we have a handful of people that are watching the meetings while we're having them. Um, and then whoever can watch it after it's done, you can't tell, so.
A lot of town play coverage, been mixed results. I mean-
Yeah, I'm sure it's the same way.
Some have nobody and then-
I'm sure it's the same way.
Some it's like must see TV.
Yeah, I'm sure. Probably depends on what's going on at the meeting.
It does. It is that.
But yeah, I think the calendar is a really great resource to put things like that on there and whatever we need to. Any type of notification we would have to do for things. I think that would count as, you know, one of the ways we notify people. And we do have that emergency response on there too. We have that, that's a little pop-up. So when everybody, anybody ever goes on the website, that's the first pop-up they see, which is good. And they've had a, um, uh, Joe Barnes did give me some feedback when he was here last time. I can't remember what the number was, but had quite a few people had joined that. So that's good.
A lot of people will put their, people will put their holiday schedule on there too. For tomorrow, nobody, some people don't know. I assume you guys are closed.
Right, right. Yeah, that's a good idea. That's a good idea.
All right, now, Mr. Work Theater. I have a whole lot. I just want to come and, um, as you're aware, the federal government is still shut down. Um, I will seem to be some movement, but-
We may have some progression today.
Some progression today. So let's hope so. Because it's affecting one huge grant program that USDA runs, the US Department of Agriculture. They have funding for rural communities. That was one we were gonna take a look at. Um, the good news, the Office of Community and Rural Affairs, OCR, that's the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. That one is still up and running. That's funded through HUD. So that one hasn't been touched yet. Um, Mike Klein Peter, your grant administrator, um, is going to make application to that program, uh, this spring. They'll have proposals that are typically due, they haven't come out with the calendar yet. But proposals are typically due in April and then again in September. So we're shooting for the spring round for you guys to get a grant, to apply for the grant. So Mike will be back in touch on how to, what he'll need. There will need to be a public hearing at some point and just certain things they require you to do. But what we're trying to do, you're gonna get seven fifty, but where's the rest of the money gonna come from to do the project? We're trying to find a program. We were gonna use USDA. They're so shut down, backed up, non-existent almost. They're down to seven staff members in the whole state of Indiana. At, at one time, they were well over a hundred. So that-
Layoffs, people quitting.
People are quitting because they're, um, not sure what the climate has, if they're gonna be terminated, if they're gonna be paid, um, things of that nature.
Are those people state or federal?
Federals, all, all federal, so. Um, so there is another grant program we're looking into to try to come up with a match for you. So I just want to let you know, we're not just letting these months go by and not doing anything. We've just got the deadlines coming up now for the OCR. So something will start happening. So, you know, the rainwater's not gonna keep, just go away. So your eye and eye has got to start to be taken care of. So, um, but there's, but there's two different programs we're gonna look at besides USDA. And as soon as we get a solid read on one of those two, we'll bring back the few three and see if it's something you guys might want to pursue. So just trying to make sure you don't have to use as little money as you can out of your own fund. Okay. If that, if that helps. So, um, but there's days I'm starting to think it's just simpler to just do this. Pay for it out of your local funds. Yeah, it'd be a lot easier and quicker.
But a lot more expensive.
But a lot more expensive. And at the end of the day, I know you wanna keep, keep your rate paid in mind.
Yeah, we have to.
You've got to. So, um, that's all I've got. I know Aaron, Aaron, my counterpart, the, our Aaron, our engineer came up and spent a, a couple of his, one of his guys came up and spent some-
Yeah, I can't remember his name. They, they was up here. I, I think they, we, we was with them for about six hours.
Yeah.
I think he probably put a nine or ten hour day in, you know, just checking the system out, you know, measure, doing measurements and-
Kind of our informal kickoff meeting. So, so we won.
Just kind of went over the whole game plan with me.
Good. I hope it eased your mind a little bit.
Oh, yeah.
Something's gonna happen one of those days. Just bear with us. The wheels of government turn slowly.
When's our next deadline we're looking at? Was it like April or something? It's a long time away.
Proposal will be April. Yes, a proposal will be due in April. And Mike Klein Peter probably will be here, probably the January meeting, talk you guys through the grant process again.
Just out of curiosity with the government shutdown and all that stuff, does that affect community crossings also?
No, my word is not. So how's that going for you? What do you guys?
Well, we, we, we need to maybe, maybe consider it. Uh, I did hear, you know, the Paser program, before I could just go out and rate my roads.
Now you can't do that.
Now, I think they changed it this year where you've gotta have an actual engineer, somebody that's been to school for-
You do.
So they're changing it up a little bit more.
Problem is they, they shrunk it due to the, the state budget being cut a little bit. They've shrunk, they're only having one around a year now.
Right. So I, I've got till December thirty-first, I think, to get everything turned in.
Thirty-first or first?
And they, I have to look at my email.
I think it's December first, Todd.
It's coming up quick.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you.
Yeah, we'll discuss that a little bit more and then I'll get back.
If we can help you in any way, we help, communities we're working, we do help with community crossings, but we are not a transportation firm. We don't do roads and bridges and all that. But if you need to help with a community crossings app, we can do that. Um, but I think double check that email. I think it's December first that everything needed to be turned in by to allow you to apply for money in July. Do you have a street in mind you wanna pave or a two?
Uh, December first, you were correct on that.
I'm afraid of that.
I just have, I just have to look through. We definitely got a couple here, there and yonder. It'd be nice if we could use it for alleys, but we can't use it on alleys.
No, a couple of streets.
I don't know if we can make an ordinance and give them a street name, but I don't, I don't think it works like that.
They might want to take a look at that.
Yeah. Yeah, but I, I mean, you, we could always use some somewhere.
Yes, that program is alive and well, but they've shrunk it to one, one around a year instead of two. So they want all your info turned in, at least your paging rate, pager rating approved by LTAP.
Right.
By December first.
Yeah.
So, um-
Yeah, I'll discuss that further with you and see where they want, where they wanna go with it.
Yeah, and that your match needs to come out of your MVH money.
Right.
So, um, and the match cannot, or your match can't pay us or a consultant out of that match. Match doesn't count, so. Yes, they made it easier, but no, not all that easy.
Right. All right, thank you.
But that's not federal. And that program is still viable. That's all I've got, Mr. President. All right, thank you. Last thing, and I may, so I'll ask you questions on this, cause you're dealing with it. But the Mid Door Christmas Parade, I know it's coming up, the first Saturday in December, correct?
I believe so.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause I just spoke with Jeremy Whittle and we signed the, uh, paper for the state to close Highway two thirty-five down for the parade route. And went through all that stuff, so that's already done.
Yeah, the event takes place December sixth, yeah. So that's the first. And- Trying to look and see. I think he said they got like forty or fifty entries already for the parade. There's vendors on the parade. Okay, we'll see in the time. That's my guess.
When is it? Wanna call?
Usually.
Okay. Well, you're gonna be able to put that on the website, so.
Yeah, I know. That's why I wanted to know what time it was. Can I have it?
Are you not hard like I'm hitting you? Uh, no, but I do do the tree lighting the night before. And it's at six o'clock in front of the library.
And don't they have caroling or singing when they do that as well?
Um, yes, the Pentecostal Church, uh, will be singing and, uh, Truly Bowman is gonna sing a song. And then once we light up the tree and that's concluded, then we will go to the senior citizens building for cookies and hot chocolate.
Deservedly so.
I've got some flyers I'm getting ready to put up around town. And I think it's been posted on Facebook.
If you send me one, I'll put it on the website.
Okay. All right.
All right, do we have any new business at this time? Have we ever discussed? Leslie, Robert? Any old business that we haven't covered? Quite much appear. Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn. My second.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn. Is he still on there?
Yeah. You're still there, aren't you, Matt?
All right, we're, we're gonna let you go. We just finished up. We just finished up, thank you.
I'm good, thanks, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.